So it is. Okay, everybody's here. Administrator Bergman, you ready?
Sure am.
All right, it is seven o'clock, seven thirty, yeah, seven o'clock somewhere. It's, uh, we'll call the meeting of the Brainerd City Council to order. Administrator Bergman, will you call the roll?
Sure will. Stingline.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
O'Day. Stunek.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Pritchett.
Here, and not first.
Mm-hmm, Bevins.
Here.
And Bado.
Here.
Please rise for the pledgeable agents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is the approval of the agenda. So move Johnson.
Second.
Pritchett.
Motion by Johnson, second by Pritchett. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Item five is a consent calendar. This is a notice that all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown. Prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call, is there a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
So move, Stunek.
Second.
Motion by Stunek, second by O'Day. Any discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, will you call the roll?
Stingline.
Yes.
Stingline, sorry. Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes. Thank you. That consent calendar is adopted. We will continue on at a breakneck speed. Six is council committee reports. Um, you know, before we move on to council committee reports, if you're, if you're watching online, uh, after the council committee reports, we'll have an open forum. But I want to give you all, if you're watching right now, and I don't know, because I don't see Sean, so we won't see how many people are on, but when it comes time to, when it comes time to speak, I'm going to give you a little heads up. You have to hit, what is it? Star three. And that'll be like digitally raising your hands. And finance director, Jim, and he'll let you in, okay? So when it comes your time to speak, it'll be star three. All right, now we will move, and I'll give you all the rules when we come up to that point on the agenda. Item six is council committee reports. Item six A is Safety and Public Works Committee Chairman O'Day.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have six items on the agenda for Safety and Public Works tonight. Uh, four of them action items, two of them are discussion. Uh, so the first one is a request to approve bids and award a contract, uh, to improvement nineteen dash zero one Northwest Fourth Street reconstruction project. And the, um, the motion is to go ahead and approve the bids and award the contract to Anderson Brothers in the amount of one million, one hundred forty-five thousand, three hundred and two dollars and thirty-two cents. And I so move.
Second, Pritchett.
All right, we have a motion, uh, and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all, yeah, Mr. O'Day.
Oh, I can just say Anderson Brothers went lowest bid, so we went with Anderson Brothers.
Excellent. Any further questions, discussions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Uh, number two on, on the agenda is a request to review and approve downtown crosswalk painting plan. Uh, I think this is a, a project that's been kind of finding its way through different committees uh, over the past several years, and it's now coming to fruition, hopefully this summer. Uh, we didn't have a motion on this, but we did, uh, have a good discussion on it. Uh, as, as far as regarding colors, uh, designs and the boundaries, it would be basically the downtown area. Uh, we left it open from, I believe, Ninth Street to Fifth Street and from Wash, is it Washington Street or Front Street?
Front.
Front to Maple.
Oak or Maple?
Maple. Front to Maple, I believe. So I'm sure we'll see more, uh, of that to come in the near future.
Thank you. Any comments on the sidewalk? Yeah, Mr. Mayor Bado.
Yeah, I'll just speak just briefly to the project. Uh, it's something that we've been kicking around for a long time. Paul and I have been working on it. He is tired of hearing me ask for it. Uh, but thankfully, we got to a committee where they got excited about it and then Paul got excited about it, so, uh, you're going to see more in the, uh, in the next meeting.
We have a question.
But I think it's a great idea. It falls in line with the parking commission's goal of having wayfinding and also allowing people to, uh, perhaps realize when they're parking a couple blocks off of the main drag in downtown that they are within walking distance. So we're not going to cover the entire city with these. It would be, uh, in an area, uh, hopefully, like we said, front and Ninth to, uh, Maple and Fifth. That's a distance where you're never more than probably four blocks from your destination, so. Uh, cool idea, and, uh, hopefully when we come back in a couple weeks, we'll have something really cool for you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the sidewalk chalk art? All right, please proceed.
All right, the next item, uh, number three is another kind of a fun idea here. Uh, it's a request to review and approve Name a Snowplow Initiative. This is something that, uh, Mindot has been working through, naming the snowplows, and, uh, we thought it would be a, a fun thing for our city to kind of follow suit and name our equipment for snow removal. So this is something that will bring into, um, the public, whether it's through the schools, we kind of left it open. Um, but Mr. Sandy is going to move forward with, uh, coming up with a, a plan to acquire some names, which we can narrow down, um, and we'll, we'll move forward and eventually get some stickers on that equipment so we can actually have real names for our snow removal equipment, which is a must. And this isn't just for fun, it's actually function as well. Um, we're going to try and incorporate some, some snowplow safety education in there along with it, so.
Thank you. Mr. O'Day, any comments, questions?
Yeah, I have a question. I like, I like, or do we only have eight big pieces of equipment in the street department?
No, we have a lot more.
Okay, so I, I like this, and it's a great start. I think we, every time we spend more than like a hundred fifty or two hundred thousand dollars on a piece of equipment, we ought to let the public name it. And fire trucks, our plow trucks, everything. It's a li, a little bit of fun for a piece of capital equipment that's going to be around for a number of years. I love this idea. Alderman O'Day, thank you.
Abe's already got his list of names that he's going to send.
All our plowey McPlow things.
Definitely something we talked about, adding, adding more and more equipment.
All of them, even the snow. Anybody else have a comment on the, on the, uh, naming the equipment? Hearing none, uh, Mr. O'Day, and there's no motion on this?
No motion on this one either.
Please proceed.
All right. Uh, number four, uh, is a motion to adopt a resolution consolidating improvement projects uh, for improvements twenty dash zero five and twenty dash zero six Southeast Brainerd and Madison Street construction. And I so move.
Second.
Excellent. We have a motion by O'Day, second by T. Erickson. Any discussion?
I can comment on it.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman O'Day.
Basically a technicality to combine a bunch of projects into one, ten streets altogether, parts of ten streets altogether, so we can move on with business more efficiently as far as hearings and so forth.
Excellent. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, will you call the roll?
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that, that motion passes. Please proceed.
Number five is a, a motion to adopt a resolution receiving feasibility report and calling hearing or a, a hearing on the improvement for improvements nineteen nineteen Northwest Third Street and Jackson Street reconstruction project. This hearing would be April fifth, um, at seven thirty PM at the regular council meeting. And I so move.
Second.
Motion by O'Day, second by Pritchett. Any discussion? Mr. O'Day.
Yeah, just basically another technicality running through the hearing, uh, something we have to do, so.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes. That motion passes. Keep going. You're doing great.
Number six. We have a motion to adopt the resolution receiving feasibility report and calling hearing on improvement for improvements twenty zero, twenty dash zero five and twenty dash zero six Southeast Brainerd and Madison Street resurfacing projects. And I so move.
We have a motion by O'Day, second by Erickson. Any discussion?
I can talk just a second.
Sure.
Same as, same as before. This is just a call to move forward on these projects. Um, we just basically consolidated them into one large project, and we got to do this to move forward, so.
Excellent. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes. Mr. O'Day.
End of report.
Thank you very much. Next up is item number B.
B?
Item number B. What, uh, what number are we on here? Let's go back. Six B, Personal and Finance Committee Chairman Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have three items, only one action item, uh, on the agenda tonight. And that's the first item, which is to consider a resolution for issuance of revenue obligation City of Peers bonds. The motion is to adopt the proposed resolution, scheduling a public hearing on the issuance of revenue obligation by the City of Peers to finance a project by Horizon Health Inc. And I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Chairman Johnson.
You may be wondering why the City of Brainerd is getting involved with, uh, the City of Peers taking out debt to fund a project by a healthcare company, but there's a state law that says we need to, as a city, consent to other cities spending their bond proceeds in our city. So there is a project in the City of Brainerd by Horizon Health, and so it's just kind of a technicality that we say we're aware of it, we're okay with it.
Excellent. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. We have a motion to adopt this resolution by Johnson, second by Stunek. Yes, or was it Stingline?
Nope.
By Stunek. No further discussion. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Stingline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The second item, we had some preliminary discussion on our, uh, capital plan, our thirty-year capital improvement budget. And Connie had a few questions that we kind of hash out down in committee, and it's just, to give you a heads up, we will be presenting to the council the thirty-year capital budget to, to Personnel and Finance and to the full council next meeting, March fifteenth. But the, the safety, or the, uh, the Public Works Department doesn't quite have a full grasp on what's going on over at Parks yet, so there will probably be some changes throughout the year, but we're just going to get started and try and set a tone of just kind of working on our capital plan every March. So we're going to move forward with that, knowing there will be a couple changes this year.
Thank you. Any comments on the capital equipment and facility budget? Just a comment, I really commend you moving forward earlier on some of these things that we know we're going to do. Or, I mean, we can always adjust them. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. And then the final item is the fire contract formula for twenty twenty-two. And you'll see the spreadsheet is on page one twenty-six of the packet, and this is the, uh, this is the spreadsheet we've been using for years to calculate what each city or means, or, uh, township pays for the share of the services for the Brainerd Fire Department. And it's a, it's a really nice, easy-to-understand formula, and we had to adopt it, or, we're not adopting anything. Connie's sharing it with us because she gets this done this early in the year because the townships need to adopt their twenty twenty-two levies in March, so they need this information. So now we have this information in, yeah. Our share is going down by almost one percent next year, so that's nice.
Thank you. Anything else?
End of report.
Thank you very much. Next up is item seven, which is unfinished business. Seven A, our committee recommendations, uh, recommended by Mayor Bado. Mayor Bado.
All right, so we have one, uh, committee recommendation tonight, and that is Tony Beezer for the Economic Development Authority.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve Tony Beezer on the Economic Development Authority. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Uh, item seven, uh, anything else, Mr. Mayor, on the recommendations?
No.
Item seven B are the call for applicants. Uh, Mayor Bado, what do you have for us tonight?
So we got a whole bunch of applicants that we still, we are still looking for. I do have applications that have come into my office, and, uh, we will be making recommendations on the majority of these at the next meeting. So if you are out there in the, uh, community and you are looking to be involved, now is the time to do so because I will be making those recommendations. I wanted to make sure there was enough time for people to get in, uh, but now is the time to start filling these up. So, uh, we are looking for the following for the terms expiring twelve thirty-one of said year. Cable TV Advisory Committee, one term expiring twenty twenty-two. Charter Commission, two terms expiring twenty twenty-four. Housing Redevelopment Authority, one term expiring twenty twenty-five. The Rental Dwelling License Board of Appeals, three terms expiring twenty twenty-two. The Transportation Advisory Committee, two terms expiring twenty twenty-two. And also the following, uh, which was pending approval, which has been approved. So we'll just go ahead and skip right over that.
Thank you. Uh, I also have a committee appointment to make on the Police, Fire and Civil Service Commission that, one term to expire twenty twenty-three, and the Ad Hoc Water Tower Committee. Next up, new business, eight A, conditional use permit for Anderson Brothers Construction. Uh, David Chansky, is this in your purview?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair.
All right, take us through it.
Um, Mr. President, members of the council, High Tech Construction submitted a request on behalf of Anderson Brothers Construction for a conditional use permit to increase the permitted height of a building at eleven three twenty-five State Highway two-ten. Um, that is the, uh, facility that Anderson Brothers Construction operates out of. The purpose of this conditional use permit is construct a new maintenance, uh, facility. And specifically, there, this facility, they desire to have it, uh, at a height of thirty-four feet. Section five one five dash seven dash eight of the Court of, Code of Ordinances states that building height more than thirty feet is a conditional use in an I-1 district, which is, um, the district in which Anderson Brothers is zoned. Um, so the Planning Commission considered the request during their meeting on Wednesday, February seventeenth. They unanimously approved the CUP stating, uh, staff's findings affect, which you can find in your packet, also adding an encouragement to continue good landscaping practices throughout the property. And they did place one condition, that the existing maintenance facility be demolished upon completion of this new maintenance facility, which is Anderson Brothers intent. I'll take any questions you have, Mr. Chair.
Any questions of Mr. Chansky? Hearing none, so we're looking for a motion to either approve the conditional use or deny.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Johnson.
I move to approve the conditional use permit for Anderson Brothers Construction to construct a new maintenance facility with a height in excess of thirty feet, stating staff's findings affect, and encouraging continued good landscaping practices throughout the property, and place a condition that the existing maintenance facility be demolished upon completion of this new maintenance facility, and I so move.
Second.
Excellent. Second by Tad, motion by Gabe Johnson, second by Tad Erickson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, and thanks, Mr. Chansky. Item nine, public forum. So if you're watching on Zoom, and that's actually the only way you can be here, you get a chance to speak on anything that we haven't already spoken about. It's where you get to tell us what you think on the topic that you're calling in on. Unfortunately, it's not a question and answer. That you can do, you don't have to wait till this point in time. You can call into City Hall, or you can call any of us. Uh, we're all listed online with our phone numbers. But this is your time to tell us what you think, okay? And you have to, you have to try and keep it to three minutes. Maybe five if you're really passionate, and I'm feeling your passion. And you have to be nice, okay? So, uh, remember, at, at the end, we'll still all be here, and, and, and we'll all still have microphones. So, so be nice. Tell us what you think about anything you want to that's not on the agenda. You have to hit star three, and our finance director, Jim, and will let you in one at a time. Tell us what you think. We'd love to hear your thoughts. So I'm going to turn it kind of over to Connie, and you just pick one at a time, I guess. Is that how we're doing this?
So if you hit star three, there we go. You see someone raising their hand. Now I will unmute them. They will have to hit star six to unmute themselves, and then you can be addressed by the council.
Okay, when you, when you, the first thing you have to do is you, yep, is you have to tell me your name and your address. So name and address, so the, the press is here and they need to know who you are, okay? Caller, thanks for calling. What's your name and address?
It would be the person that has the last two digits and their number of zero eight.
They have to hit star six.
You have to hit star six, and then we'll be able to hear you.
Zero eight, you have to hit star six, and then, okay?
You're muted now. Now say your name and address, please.
Say your name and address, zero eight. No. Zero eight.
Somebody there?
Yep, we're here. State your name and address and tell us what you'd like to talk about. For, for three minutes or less.
Okay, my name is Steve Sauer. I live at four fifty Tyrell Drive. And what I'd like to talk about is this letter that we got about, uh, City Code, section five one five three seven five C, which says that all commercial speech signs of any size must be removed, or non-commercial must be removed within the days following an election. And then it goes on to talk about, um, what defines the non-commercial speech. And that goes, uh, messages concerning political, religious, social, ideological, public service, civic events, and informational topics. And I guess what I'm looking for is clarification. I did speak with Mr. Chansky for, uh, quite a while, uh, last week, and he suggested I call in and talk to the council because it appeared as though the entire council was not involved in putting this letter together. So, but I, I questioned, um, I understand the political signs, and I understand, you know, placing them in easements and whatnot. And I do have a sign, but it's, uh, I, I guess I would like to find out where it falls into. And I'll preface it with this. Um, I work directly with law enforcement in the county, which is the local PD, the sheriff's office. And, uh, so I have a sign out there, um, that all it states is, um, we respect and, uh, and honor our local law enforcement officers, plain and simple. It says nothing more, nothing less than that. And, um, it's no longer in the front yard, but it is going on the balcony on the front of my house, which will happen tomorrow. And I also questioned on the religious, it says religious on there. Nearly every church that you drive by does have some kind of a message box out there. It's a sign, and there's different messages on it, maybe on a daily basis, weekly basis, and whatever. You know, so does that mean at our church, we can't do that either? So, you know, it's just, it's kind of vague, you know, and then it has social. Well, how do you define social? And like ideological, I understand, you know, if you're passionate about a particular, be it political, non-political, whatever, and you want people to know that, um, apparently that can't be in your, your yard either. And it doesn't say anything about being on the house, so, um, but I guess I just want clarification on that. And, you know, it just seems like it's, it's taken a, a wide brush and made the one swipe over everything. And so it's pretty much limited to having nothing out there is what, the way I interpret this. And I just kind of feel it's, in, in a way, this is kind of a First Amendment thing, you know? And I'm, I'm very passionate about free speech and maintaining that. So if somebody could clarify that for me, I would appreciate it. And if we can't do it tonight on here, I would be glad again to, you know, talk with somebody one-on-one, not a problem.
Steve, have you, have you said everything you needed to say?
I think so.
Okay, before you, before you hang out, the council actually can't, we haven't, we haven't answered any of your questions as a group.
Right.
So I, you know, I, I don't, I don't know that we can do that tonight.
Right.
But we sure appreciate you giving us direction if we do, or presuming we do.
And, yeah, and Kelly, that was my only intent, was to get it out there and make it, maybe make it become a discussion topic so that, you know, I can get some resolve on the interpretation of what this actually means.
Right, right, so, okay. Well, thank you for calling in. Connie, what does Steve knew to, Steve, you might want to hang on only because I don't know where this is going to go this evening. I can, I can guess.
Steve, I'm just going to mute you, and you're still going to be able to, you'll hear us, but we won't be able to hear you.
All right, thank you, Steve. So the next person who wants to speak has to hit star three. So we'll see you on the screen, raising your hand. Do we have anyone else who wants to speak, Connie?
Mr. Daniel, here we go. We have someone unmuted. Yep. Go ahead, Daniel.
Okay, Daniel, you need to hit star?
Nope, he's good.
You're good. Okay, tell us what you think.
I just wanted to add that my thoughts were, uh, aligned with Steve as far as what's included in this, uh, prospect, and how far does the city want to, want to take that? We have a lot of veterans in the city that are flying, uh, different military branch flags from their flag poles, uh, that sort of thing. I just wanted to, nod in grants to what Mr. Sauer said, as far as how far do you want to take this? I mean, you can't have this, you can't have that, you can't have that, but we have how many thousand vehicles driving around town with the very same thing on it, either parked in front of their house or driving down the street of the city. And that was pretty much all I wanted to add to it.
Can we get Mr. Daniel's, uh, Mr. Wall's address?
Okay, Dan, Daniel, we need to have your last name and address for the record. Thank you.
I'm sorry, my last name is Wall, and my address is four twenty-three Southeast Seventeenth Street, Brainerd.
All right. Thank you for calling in. Anything else before we let you go?
No, sir.
All right, we're going to put you back on mute, but you might want to hang on just to, I, I, again, I don't know where this is going. We're going to let people talk. Connie, is there anybody else who's raised their hand?
There is. There's someone with the last two digits of their phone number, uh, that's two-two. You've been sent a request, so you can hit star six, and we'll be able to hear you.
All right, two, if your phone number ends in two-two, please hit star six and let us know what you have to say about, about anything that we haven't discussed. And don't forget, don't forget your name and address.
Okay. Uh, can you hear me?
Yep, we hear you. Great.
Okay. Uh, my name is Andrea Oskapo. My address is twenty-one twenty-three Crespi Lane in Brainerd.
Perfect. Tell us what you got to say, Andrea.
Well, mine is the same, um, I received the same letter, um, and it was because of my Black Lives Matter sign. Um, and I guess, like, I've written some letters and, um, which is kind of describing everything, how I, I feel about my sign and, but the questions I do have to it, sounds like other people have, is like, which category is my sign, you know, considered in the letter? And then, um, like, like, so why do I have to take it down? I guess I just have lots of questions. So I know that you guys can't really answer too many questions, it sounds like, tonight. But, um, yeah, I mean, I, I'm really, um, passionate about my sign. Um, I know it might mean different things to different people, but to me, it just means, like, it's about just, you know, what's going on right now in our country for, like, equality, justice, inclusion, um, eliminating prejudice, racism, things like that. Um, I'm in an, I have, uh, um, I'm in an interracial marriage. I have biracial kids, like, so Black Lives Matter to me is like, it's really important, um, in just, you know, standing up for my family and, um, showing support for people all over the world right now. Um, so I guess, I don't know, I, I would like to be able to keep my sign in my yard. I did take it down on the twenty-sixth, um, like the letter stated, so, but I, I would just really like to be able to keep it. Um, and I know I don't have a lot of time right now, so I won't take up too much more of your time. Um, but, uh, as far as just being able to keep just being able to keep it and and ask having some of the questions I have answered, or I mean, yeah, so I just, that's about all I really have to say. I don't want to go into too much detail, but yeah.
Okay. Andrea, didn't you send a, did you send a letter in?
Um I've sent a couple letters to David and then and then I sent um, I sent one to you today, yesterday.
I got those.
So, yep.
Are all your questions in those letters?
Yes.
Rest assured, we'll do our, we'll do our best to answer all of them in, but probably not this evening during the council meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
I just wanted, I just wanted you to know that we got, we got them.
Okay, thanks, Kelly. Uh they're all just listed on the bottom of the letter, so they're right there, so.
Right. What what we're gonna get to do, Andrea, is when everybody gets a chance to speak, then we're gonna give Mr. Chansky a chance and and he'll he'll note all the letters that he's received because we forward them to him and they become part of the public record as well.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, sounds good.
All right, so we're done, we're just starting tonight, but we we sure do want to hear what you have to say. Anything else, Andrea?
Um, you know, that's all I really have to say right now.
Okay. Stay tuned for further further notice. We're gonna mute you now and we're gonna see if anybody else hits star three to raise their hand to join the meeting and let us know what they have to say.
Actually, given the three people that are call-ins or that are on the webinars, they have spoke, everybody else's staff.
Perfect. Well, I'm gonna ask one more time, anybody else? And we're going to end the the the, we're gonna end the Zoom portion of the public forum and we're gonna give uh Community Development Director Chansky a chance, first of all, while the public forum is still open, a chance to notify the council as to what what else he's, if he's received anything that should be part of the public forum. Mr. Chansky.
Thank you, uh Mr. President. Other than um just noting that we did get Ms. Ossapo's letter, which we can, if you hadn't already, we'll get out to the rest of the council after this meeting. I did receive one other letter from Sonia and Lawrence Chamberlain, who reside at four oh one Juniper Street. Uh they write, Dear Mr. Chansky and the City Council members of the city of Brainerd, this letter serves as a contribution to the open forum for the Brainerd City Council meeting to be held on March one, twenty twenty-one. Lawrence and I wish to comment on the letter we, as well as some of our neighbors, recently received regarding Brainerd City Code section five one five dash three seven dash five point C. The above-mentioned city code regulates non-commercial speech signs and largely defines this type of speech to include messages concerning political, religious, social, ideological, public service, civic events, and informational topics. We currently display a sign in our yard that is not connected to a specific political candidate or election, but rather expresses our general philosophy on how we would hope human beings would treat each other on a daily basis. While the sign was originally posted during an election season, it is, it expresses an ideology we hold dear three hundred sixty-five days per year and therefore do not wish to remove. We were frankly shocked to receive the letter asking us to remove the sign from our yard. Plainly, it seems a blatant disregard for free for free speech and our First Amendment rights. As you will learn from the attached materials, there's a substantial case law, including several US Supreme Court decisions, that have come to the same conclusion. The enclosed open letter from the ACLU of Massachusetts, while not specific to Minnesota, outlines these legal decisions and their national relevancy. Also included for your education is information from the League of Minnesota Cities detailing ways in which cities can draft sign ordinances that respect citizens' free speech while preserving the public safety. We urge you to consider these materials. Our ultimate wish is that the city revise the current code to respect all citizens' rights to free speech. We do not plan to remove our sign at this point and will continue to follow upon this issue with the city and its council members. Sincerely, Sonia and Lawrence Chamberlain.
Excellent. Anything else you'd like to make part of the public record?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, then we will close the public hearing. And uh before we move on to item ten, which is staff reports, I know all three of those people, including the fourth with in writing, asked there must be something in the letter regarding enforcement.
Correct.
And I'd like to turn it back to you because I think you probably would be, I know it would be appreciated if you'd make some comments.
Yes.
Short as you can.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President.
Including where we might go from here.
So at this point, Mr. President, this is what I will say I have to say is that in the time since that letter went out, um well, as I was saying, leading up to that letter, starting about the beginning in the year, uh the city, we did, and my staff, did really start to receive numerous complaints regarding um non-commercial speech signs. And when, again, we were doing uh complaint-driven enforcement, um looking at this issue, we saw that this is a bigger issue than than just one single sign. Again, we did consider multiple different ways in which to approach this. And ultimately, um after conferring with the city attorney and the city administrator, this seemed to be the best, most fair um approach across the board that we took. Since then, uh we've been doing a number of research, lots of research into this issue. Um one of the things that has come uh to my attention is that while I maintain that I did act appropriately to how our ordinance is currently written, um my research does lead me to conclude that the city may not meet, that the city code as it is currently written may not meet legal muster on this issue. Um as the Chamberlins alluded to, there is um a lot of case language on this and most recently the case of Reed versus the town of Gilbert, Arizona, which was um ruled on by the by the Supreme Court in two thousand fifteen, specifically regarding this type of issue. So what I would recommend to the council this evening would be to refer this issue to the Planning Commission for Review and to abstain from any enforcement of non-commercial speech sign, of the of the non-commercial speech sign ordinance until the Planning Commission has reviewed the ordinance and has returned a recommendation to the council.
Excellent. So we can discuss something. Does anybody care to make a motion? I saw Gabe Johnson and then uh.
I I'd make a motion to uh refer the code, refer the ordinance to planning and zoning and to uh stop, temporarily stop enforcement on the non-commercial speech sign until we uh have a resolution on what planning and zoning comes up with, and I so moved.
Excellent. All right, we have a motion by Johnson, second by Pritchett. Now we have something we can discuss. Is there anybody who wishes to discuss that motion? Not the letter, but the motion. Gabe Pritchett.
You know, I think it's it's something that needs to be looked at. To me, it sounds like the intent of this was probably to stop people from leaving political signs up forever and just leave them there. And it seems to be taking a lot of other things in its wake. When you read it, it almost sounds like I can't put up any sign anytime ten days after an election unless I take it down seven days. And if somebody wanted to, they could have that sign up for seven days, take it down for one day, put it up for seven days. And if they can do that legally, we might as well change it so instead of playing with the law, like putting snow over your expired license plate, we can, we can fix that. So, you know, it's one of those things, you know, the more laws, the more criminals. I think our citizens, if they have some views that they wish to express, I think they should be able to express those as long as it's, you know, in in an appropriate way. And I think this would would work towards that.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Pritchett. Any any further discussion? Gabe Johnson?
I I support the motion and I look forward to what our assistant city planner and the Planning and Zoning Commission come up with.
We're gonna make that person earn their money. Anybody else? Mayor Bedeau?
I I want to say that I am appalled at the fact that this isn't as much of an uproar as it should be. I have currently placed a sign in my yard because of this, because there's no reason why the city should be wasting its time doing this. And I absolutely cannot stand that the city is going about irritating its citizens. This is the exact stuff that people complain about us doing. This is the exact stuff that we spend so much time trying not to do because we want the citizens to understand that we're not there to badger them, we're there to help, and we're there to be a part of the process, not a hindrance. So I will proudly be placing multiple signs in my yard until this is fixed.
Are they political?
Every single one of them will be nonsense. It'll be nothing but nonsense. But everyone should have the right to place signs in their yard. We shouldn't be there telling them to.
Time, 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 time. Anybody have anything worthwhile to say? But I mean, we we started there. Tiffany Stangl, my gosh, I forgot you were even here.
I know, down at the end here. I'm not even at the kitty table.
We need to get you some phone books. Yes.
Uh, well, I I also, I had several phone calls as well. Um so I think that it is, I I think it's generating interest, which is good. Um I guess I have a question. I assume somewhere is still that list of seventy-one addresses because I guess I would like to see the city reach out to those folks again and tell them what we're doing since we sent them the first letter that was upsetting, clearly.
I'll I'll share this with you. You can either make an a a friendly amendment or we can turn to the motion or and see what he thinks on sending out seventy-six more letters.
Uh I I don't think I need to, I don't think I want to amend the motion. I think if staff feels that's good, they can do it administratively. But I don't think it's, I don't think it's necessary because people are, some people are just gonna leave them up anyway. Some people forgot that they had a sign in their yard. Some people weren't even notified that they had a sign in their yard and then remembered they had a sign in their yard.
And they should really be reading the dispatch. Tiffany has the floor. Tiffany, now you can either offer an amendment and try and bypass Gabe or you can let us vote on this and then you can make a second motion if you want to.
I will not try and bypass Gabe. I'm not that foolish.
Anything else you wish to say?
Um, no.
Chief Stunek.
The only thing I would say is I believe we have the paper here tonight. It looks like it. And I think with our discussion here, she'll probably make a nice blurb in the paper regarding this issue.
Right. Should I do this? Should I hold this up? Do you still have your camera? All right. Ted, you've been, you've been woefully quiet over there. Anything you want to add? Mike? No?
No, I sup, I support the motion.
Thank you.
And as liaison of the Planning Commission, I look forward to seeing it in committee.
There'll be more signs up by noon tomorrow than you can imagine.
I can only imagine.
And the mayor can't wait.
Can I just say one thing?
No, you've already had the floor and Mike O'Dea is over here just dying.
He, well, we're all dying technically, but.
So be it. Thank goodness. He's sitting here just calm. Go ahead, Dave. You want to start round two? Can't you just vote?
I just want to say that one thing quickly, and the longer you draw this out, the longer I'm gonna speak. Okay. So I think our staff did the right thing. I think it was an ordinance to stop people from leaving signs out. Our staff did the right thing. They they sent out the letters as per, they they let us know and it's getting taken care of. So I'm I'm glad that that's the case.
Still got four minutes.
I ain't hold my breath about that long if you want me to.
I can throw the gavel that far. All right. Hearing no further meaningful discussion, we have a motion and a second. We've no further discussion. We've discussed it to death. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say a m sign that motion carries. If, Steve, Danny, and Andrea, you hung on through all of that, you can um leave your signs up for now. Thank you, guys, for calling in. Tiffany, do you have a second motion on this topic?
Sure, I will move that we send follow-up letters explaining the process moving forward to the people who received the first letter.
Excellent. Any second on that motion? Any second on Tiffany's motion? Any second on Tiffany's motion? That motion dies for lack of second. We will move on to item ten, Staff Reports. Item ten A, City Administrator Bergman.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Mr. Mayor, I will be brief. In your packet, you do have an update of the goals. I'm trying to provide the council uh with quarterly updates uh to the goals that were adopted back in uh July of twenty twenty. Uh the Destination Downtown Business Coalition is starting to discuss holiday lights. Um yep, the holidays are over, but they're really wanting to get a good head start on this so that come holidays of twenty twenty-one, we will be ready and prepared. Um and that, unless you have any questions of me, I'm going to leave it at that. Two other items in my report. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any questions for the administrator? Hearing none, we will uh, let's see, we've gotta go through all the staff reports. Let's just move around the room. Paul Sandy, Engineer Sandy.
Uh thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. So at the last uh park board meeting, um kind of in line with uh the capital improvement conversation that uh Alderman Johnson and the Personnel and Finance Committee had tonight, um the park board is uh making strides into really uh reimagining kind of what our parks are gonna look like in the future. Um the first step of this um at the January Park Board meeting, they directed staff to um find a consultant that would be able to assist us in creating what we're calling design standards. Uh this would be to basically um brand our parks and our open spaces uh with the um same type of features in every park. Our warming houses are looking the same, our signs, um our pavilions, and all of the uh things that go into our parks. Staff did reach out to Woodset Smith Knowlton. They provided us a uh proposal in which kind of outlined what they do as a company from their design standpoint. Um and at the February Park Board meeting, we actually uh approved a um uh a professional services agreement for forty-five hundred dollars for Woodset to do some design standards for our parks. Uh with that information, we are going to be moving forward in uh reformulating our entire capital plan uh in the Parks Department uh to include all of our facilities, along with uh keeping our equipment up to date and uh really looking at what the highest priority items are for the park board and um continuing the parks to uh get them uh from a maintenance and uh uh care standpoint back up to uh what the residents in Brainerd uh pay for. So um that's what the park board has been working on of recent. Uh any other non-action items that we had in relation to the park board can be seen in the packet tonight in the uh Maintenance and Recreation Report, which is a little different than what you've seen in the past. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Sandy, next up, nothing from the Finance Department. Community Development Director Chansky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things. First, the EDA does meet this Thursday, March fourth, at seven thirty AM here in the council chambers. Additionally, the park, a little update on the Parking Commission, um they do continue to meet on a monthly basis. Uh in for their March meeting, which will be held on Thursday, the eighteenth, um they'll be reviewing a report um that will actually be issued to the city council. Kind of what they've done so far and how they're planning on addressing the parking issues here um the downtown area and the city of Brainerd as a whole. So again, that'll be uh during their meeting on March eighteenth. I expect that to be presented to the city council on April fifth. And then uh just on this, tuning the sign issue, uh this will be on the Planning Commission agenda for their March, Wednesday, March seventeen, meeting.
Excellent. Thank you very much. David, anything from the Legal Department?
Nothing, thank you.
All right, we'll go across the Zoom. Anything from the HRA, Mr. Sharptier?
Nothing this evening, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Chris, Chris Schubert, anything from the HR Department?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori, I see IT is here. Anything you want to add? No, I'll take that as a no. Stephanie, anything you want to add? No. Tim Holmes? From the Fire Department?
Nothing to add, President.
Yeah.
Does that have all the appropriate pages?
I don't know. I got it from Stunek. They're all stuck together. Thank you, though.
Make sure it doesn't have too many Aprils.
Nothing gets Stunek more.
Tomorrow.
Nothing gets Stunek more excited than a fire truck. I can't even hold it open. He gave it to me, now he wants it back. Thank you, Chief, for coming on board with us. Anybody else on the Zoom? No, I don't.
Mr. Bestow.
Oh, Mike Bestow, police, from the Police Department, Acting Chief. Anything you want to add to this tonight?
Mr. President, I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for joining us. Okay, that ends all our staff reports. Crazy Mayor Bedeau, that radical mayor from Brainerd.
I don't think you said him talk today.
Well, just as a. We just muted him.
That's right. Just as a point, uh all the items that I will talk about will be signs in my yard by next week. So uh just super quick, parks, uh to follow up with that conversation there, they're finalizing everything from the programs side of thing with their joint ventures with the YMCA and with uh community ed. That stuff is getting put together and is. uh, Community Ed. That stuff is getting put together and is coming together nicely. Uh, however, there is a new banner program. And you can specifically sponsor the fields that our children play on. So, uh, just so you're all aware, every single one of you sh- uh, here at the council level should be receiving some kind of uh, request for sponsorship, because I made sure that your names are in there. Your businesses and organizations. So, uh, hopefully you receive those. Hopefully you sponsor our field so we can continue to have such a high level. Uh, Parking, uh, Commission, just to follow up on the, the crosswalk thing, uh, that's a part of a larger discussion about wayfinding and about getting pathways for um, our people to feel comfortable with the downtown area and with the ability to, uh, participate actively from your car onto foot. Uh, you'll be seeing a lot more stuff from that. They also had a really good conversation about uh, the financial aspects, as was asked of you, or asked from you, um, both of that financial aspects of our uh, paid lots as well as our free lots. So that's gonna be an interesting conversation that will be coming to you. Um, again, this group is, uh, uh, full of doers and I appreciate that. So they're gonna rattle some cages and I really like that. Uh, Downtown Brainerd is having its St. Patrick's Day Walkabout. That will be happening in two weeks. That will be on, uh, March thirteenth. You guys will be able to hang out and have a good time downtown. Uh, no parade, obviously, but, uh, we're gonna have a, a good, uh, amount of fun with some, uh, activities as well as, uh, shopping and, uh, deals on food and/or beverage. That should be fun. Uh, the Sesquicentennial, this one's important. It is currently the hundred and fiftieth year, year of the City of Brainerd. Uh, the signing of our charter happened in September of this year, a hundred and fifty years ago. Uh, but, uh, to note, uh, the celebration should really be getting started here now, and one of the biggest milestones, in my opinion, is coming up on March eighth. That was the completion of the bridge across the Mississippi River, which in my mind really, uh, is the start of the City of Brainerd. Uh, this was selected as the crossing of the Mississippi by the railroad. That completion of those tracks across the Mississippi is really when the City of Brainerd, uh, got its start. So we should have something fun for that day. Uh, maybe some kind of proclamation or something coming from the mayor. But, uh, keep that on your calendars, March eighth, a hundred and fifty years since we've been crossing that Mississippi via train. Uh, and then lastly, Connie has pulled up here on the screen. Uh, you may recall, uh, about a month, month and a half ago, we were uh, asked by students at the, um, Garfield Elementary School to take around Flat Stanley at our business office. And, uh, from the mayor's perspective, the, the office of the City of Brainerd is the City of Brainerd. And so, uh, Fl- Flat Stanley and myself went on quite an adventure. And you can see everything from Connie's really dirty desk to, to Paul's really, really, really strangely clean desk.
Shots fired.
So Fl- Flat Stanley enjoyed, uh, many activities, including uh, what he wanted to do more than anything, uh, was get to the top of the water tower. So we took Flat Stanley right up to the top. And I'm gonna tell you what, uh, when it's thirty below outside, uh, you get a hundred and forty feet up in the air, a hundred feet up in the air, and it's really, really, really cold. So, uh, we walked back in with frost on our brows, uh, but we had a good time. So, end of report.
All right. All right, Ted Erickson, can you top that?
No, nothing to report today.
Thank goodness. Yes, you, you did well. Alderman Pritchett?
Nothing to report.
Chairman O'Day?
I wanted to say I stopped at the new grocery store downtown just before the meeting. Great place. Lots of good, healthy choices for the downtown community. I suggest you guys all check it out. Yeah, the new Co-op. Um, and I think Alderman Johnson pointed out that is the, what, seventh or eighth business to relocate or, or start up in downtown Brainerd during a pandemic.
Since the pandemic started, that is the eighth business to open their doors downtown Brainerd.
Good stuff.
So despite the economic uncertainty, people are still flogging to downtown business to.
Downtown, basically downtown's on fire. But not, like, in a good way.
Yeah, we, we've done that before. Let's just keep.
Careful what you say.
Stunek was heading to the door. Chairman, Chairman Johnson, we're just gonna keep rolling this one.
Two things, Parking Commission seems to be moving and shaking and that's great to see. I am so glad that we almost unanimously appointed or reestablished that committee last year. And then just a, an update from the BPU meeting. Uh, got some things going on over there, but, uh, one of the interesting tidbits that you guys might find interesting is the City of Baxter is having problems providing safe, reliable water to their citizens. So we're in negotiations to just provide them water for the remainder of the calendar year and possibly forever. Because Brainerd has reliable, clean, excellent, primo water.
It's expensive, though. I mean, if you're, if you're Baxter, you should know that, right up front. All right, Chief Stunek?
I wanna know where we are timeframe-wise and see if I have to talk longer or shorter or nothing. Okay, I'm done.
Tiffany Stanglin?
Uh, Region Five, Matt, in addition to approving everything that Alderman Erickson brought before us, uh, Eric Hetner of CLC was appointed to the Regional Transportation Coordination Council. Um, so if that's of interest to anybody, you now know where, that he is, um, on that council.
Thank you. And I just have one short thing. Last weekend, I went and visited longtime servant of the citizens, Mary Cope. From the City of Brainerd, it is the one-year anniversary on the passing of Walter uh, this month, and I went and spent some time with her in her kitchen, and there is some Brainerd history. I will share this with you. Don't forget about Mary Cope. She particularly likes visitors around two, three in the morning, I think. Uh, uh, maybe I have that wrong, but she may have been on that bridge. March eighth, what year was it? But Mary Cope, thank you for your time. Thank you for the service you gave to the City of Brainerd.
And your black market.
We're not even gonna talk about that. Thank you. It was my pleasure to spend an afternoon with you last Saturday. That is it. We are going to go to item thirteen, which is an adjournment to the Joint EDA City Council Meeting and City Council Workshop one week from tonight, March eighth, five PM, in the council chambers. Is there a motion?
No, no. That's fire hall.
We had to change the meeting location.
Oh, my fault.
I move what Kelly said.
Second. And to ignore Chief Stunek?
Ignore Chief Stunek.
We have a motion by our two chairs. Johnson and O'Day, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, say a m-.